Good afternoon and welcome to the 24th meeting of the Honolulu Liquor Commission. Please silence all of your electronic devices, it will interfere with our commission's reporter. If you're appearing today before the commission, please introduce yourself and your client and spell your names for our reporter. And if you're here to testify, please come forward, be sworn in by Ms. Aray and introduce yourself and spell your name. With that being said, commissioners, I see we have some minutes from previous meetings.
Yes Chair. Motion for the approval of the regular minutes of the 18th, 19th and the executive session minutes of the 18th and 19th meeting as previously circulated. Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye. The regular minutes of the 18th and the 19th meetings and the executive session minutes of the 18th and the 19th meetings are approved. Moving into the public hearing, calling agenda item number one, transfer application number 19-15018 from Ono's Market. Ms. Wu.
Good afternoon, Commissioner, Mr. Min Yeo, on behalf of Ono's Market, on my right is President's Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Aray.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This application has received zero written protests, zero letters of support, applicants with statutory requirements for the submission of this application.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Seeing none, commissioners?
Motion to approve, chance for application number 19-15018. Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number one, transfer application number 19-15018 is approved.
Thank you, Ms. Wu.
Calling agenda item number two, application number 19-14762 from Kawai Loa Tavern LLC.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Jason Paz, G-E-S-O-N-P-A-Z.
Thank you. Ms. Aray.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This application has received zero written protests, zero letters of support, applicants with statutory requirements for the submission of this application. And for the record, a summary of the November 15 preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioner Min prior to the public hearing.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Seeing none. Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant or type of action?
Motion to approve, application number 19-14762. Second.
Then moved in second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number two, application number 19-14762 is approved. Calling agenda item number three, application number 19-14980 from Consolidated Entertainment LLC. Good afternoon, Mr. Keuch, Ms. Obciana.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Members of the Commission, Keith Keuch and Deobciana. To my left representing the applicant, to my right is Rod Tengon, he's the area manager for Consolidated Entertainment LLC. And also, we've got three group members of the group for Consolidated, Lynn from the West Coast, Terry Moore, who's in the back, she's the Vice President of Operations, Santos Lu, who's the food consultant for Consolidated.
Come up front, so we can see who we're dealing with.
And King.
Come on up and get some.
She came all the way here, I just hope she'll be in the show.
There you go, thank you.
So they're all here, in part for the hearing, in part to observe the area operations. What I've handed out to you, what Ms. Obciana handed out was a letter of support from the landlord, Town Center, Milwanani, the property manager from Town Center is here. What was also handed out to you, because there was a little bit of confusion the last time on the floor plan, so I've done an 11 by 17. And so you can see on theaters 3 through 8, the clear entrances, I've marked that in yellow. The entrances actually start off underneath the tiered seating, and that's where they come out into theater. So there's a little bit of confusion last time, because it appeared that there might be multiple levels, that this is really a single level, but the theater, especially 3 to 8, to go up and then to go down. So I just did that to illustrate, and when we do the final inspection, we'll clarify any matters that the investors need to clarify.
Very good. So before I go any further, I just want to clarify that on the letter from Ms. Kinney, that this is a typo, when she says, "I am here to provide testimony, provide my testimony in support of the liquor application of Consolidated Entertainment LLC at Consolidated Theaters Milwanani 14." That is a typo?
It's a typo, it's 14 theaters.
It could be, it could be construed to mean she's only approving one theater.
Right, correct.
Okay, right?
But we call it Milwanani 14, whatever.
Yeah, very familiar with that.
Yeah, okay.
I'd also like to clarify, Chair, you know, due to the questions at the preliminary hearing, I did provide additional copies of our cover letter to our application, which outlines the security clause for this particular license.
Thank you very much. With that being said, Ms. Aray.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This application has received zero written protests, one letter of support, applicants with statutory requirements for the submission of this application. And for the record, a summary of the November 15 preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioner Min prior to the public hearing.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Seeing none, commissioners, do you have any questions or type of action for the applicants?
I have a question. So now I see that the bar is going to be located in the main lobby.
Yes.
Right? As you folks know, I go to this theater regularly. I received, our food service was done in a condiments and a soda section, which is in front of, what is it, number four?
Number four, right.
So when you get your items from the bar, you're going to be passing this corridor in which they ticket you, right, for the tickets, right?
Right.
You're going to be walking in with your beverages at this time, too, and they direct you to which theater to go to, which is, you know, whatever theaters is allowed, right? How? I had assumed, and maybe it was just bad on my part, I had assumed the bar would be in front of number four, which is a more visible area, because the lobby is very congested for traffic coming in and going out as well. And I'm sure you guys are aware of this, is the main entrance is not, there's nobody there to scout anybody out, because you can walk in without a ticket, walk in, you know, be seated to nobody.
Into the lobby.
Yeah, to the main lobby side of it, right? Because the ticket area is down here. So having said that, there's not really presence in the main lobby. How are we going to fight through that challenge?
Commissioner Ghanima, so, well, we currently have the box office, which you indicated is on the outside of the theater, which is lobby to the upper right.
The two blank white spaces.
The white, yeah.
Right, right. So we're planning to move the ticketing area into the lobby.
Oh, okay, okay.
In front of that stairs on the far left wall.
Okay.
We've actually installed the reception counter, and we plan to activate that probably within the next month, prior to our opening, the food service areas.
Okay. So now they're going to come in through the main entrance, they're going to purchase to the left, and then given whatever movie you're going to watch, you know how you have the lineup in the corridor happening here for the designated movies, right? They have the waiting lines and the stations going out. Is that going to continue in that corridor as well?
It might, it might. What we've also done with the renovation is that we've converted all the seating to reserved seating, and what we've found...
I thank you, thank you, because I did fully utilize that, and my seats were available for me.
And what we found is, and maybe you've experienced it, is that now you know the seat you're sitting in, it's not necessary to get there 30 minutes and, you know, before that.
Five minutes prior was very convenient, actually, it really was.
We're hoping to spend more time in the concession.
So what you're saying is that those queue lines are, may not even be present in the future.
We found that with the, yeah, with the conversion to reserved seating, that it's, we've sort of eliminated the need for those lines.
Okay.
It's not always the case, popular movies, people like to show up ahead of time, so we might have, we might have some queuing, but I think we're going to minimize certainly what we have, what we had previous.
Well, I would say that the experience I had, and it's free popcorn now during renovations, so that was excellent. So when we, when we, and given that I, you know, I brought my parents, who since then the movies have changed over twice, I mean, theirs was like going through a drive-in and that kind of stuff, when they experienced that, they were more than happy to go to the movies anytime now, so, and with the reclined seats and everything, so it worked out. I just was curious about this on the bar section, how that's going to work.
And when we change the floor plan to the F, we'll do the amended floor plan. So that'll probably happen before the final inspection, to be accurate.
Yeah, because there's a lot of traffic that happens out in that ticket area, which they're lining up on the side of the building completely, and you know, it's your main audience, is a lot of them are the teenagers and stuff, but, yeah, I'm just worried about that corridor coming in where the tickets are being taken and passing the bar section, yeah. Okay.
We certainly, by moving our ticketing operation or sales into the lobby, I mean, now we're going to have presence that wasn't there previously, so we hope to, and if we need to, we'll also man the lobby as well.
Well, with the reserved seating, we didn't even have to see anybody, technically. I mean, we just, I just busted out on a phone and they scanned it, and I was in and out of there, really confused.
You're pleasing our...
No, I mean, I'm...
I guess our investment is paying off, so...
Maybe this isn't the appropriate case to say, but I'm seeing that on my experience, and this is just the day after Thanksgiving, New Year's, it was, it was really busy, but it was very minimal lines and very organized, so, very good.
I did.
Okay, so head on.
No gratuitities accepted.
Free popcorn is always a good thing.
Yeah, yeah. All right. Motion to approve, application number 19-14980. Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number three, application number 19-14980 is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you very much.
Agenda item number four, application number 19-15096 from EKC International Hawaii.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Naomi Kuo, on behalf of the applicant. Present to my right is Vice President Mamoru, M-A-M-O-R-U, Tatemori, T-A-T-E-M-O-R-I. I just have one quick change to the investigator report, it is on page two, what's it, parking, street parking, in addition to street parking, there is, there are 12 stalls above for this restaurant, and there are no predigent.
Thank you very much. Ms. Aray.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This application has received zero written protests, zero letters of support, applicants with statutory requirements for the submission of this application. And for the record, a summary of the November 15 preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioner Min prior to the public hearing.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Seeing none, commissioners?
I'm looking at your folks' map, which didn't come out very well on our thing, so what, you folks are going to be at YLI and 10th Avenue, or YLI and 9th Avenue?
It's in between 9 and 10.
Okay, what was there before?
I think it's JJ Bistro.
Oh, okay, okay. All right, and so it's next to Brood, is that the...
It's close to Brood, yeah.
It's close to Brood.
Right, it's in that complex.
Okay. And I'm very familiar with the area, I used to live on 9th Avenue, right behind town. So, and it's busy there, residential area, busy, several very popular restaurants and bars. You folks have any parking?
The 12 parking that I just mentioned, yeah.
Okay, and that's in the back of the building?
Backside.
And where is the entrance for that parking?
It's off of 9th.
Okay, so it's behind by that, is there, there used to be like a little open, like market?
Yeah.
Is it next to that?
Yeah, the entrance is next to it.
Okay. All right, please be mindful of your neighbors, if I said this is a residential area.
Motion to approve, application number 19-15096. Second.
Then moved in second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number four, application number 19-15096 is approved. Thank you. Moving into other business, agenda item number five, request number 19-15830 from Christina O'Hara. Commissioners, can I have a motion to withdraw this request?
Motion to withdraw, request number 19-15830. Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number five, our request number 19-15830 is withdrawn. Moving into agenda item number six, Arts Cultural Merchants, Ms. Reed. This is a post-event report.
Yes. Reading commissions, I have a report to submit, I'm sorry, it's now instead of earlier. And thank you for the continuation, I apologize, I had an injury and then back-to-back illnesses, so December was a really hard month. So I'm catching up, which is why this wasn't early, but if you would like, I can kind of move through it and then give you those highlights, and then if there's any questions at the end, of course.
Yes, please.
Thank you. So this is a summation for our First Friday Arts and Culture Mural Installation Block Party Series in 2018. We had a series that spanned from April to December with liquor licenses for every one of those months except for June. Our initial request for street closures were 6:30, but instead the DTS decided to allow us to 7:30 as a trial. This is something we're hoping to make a little earlier. I'll go into our 2019 goals at the end. By and large, the street closures have started on time and they've ended early. We've only had some issues with safety systems and dropping off our loading zone, passenger loading zone, A-frames in time so that we can properly enforce the tollway zone. HPD requested that we put these A-frames up along the loading zones on Uwanu and Smith Street as a way to ease congestion for people and transportation network companies coming in and going from the area. To also alleviate this, we've partnered with Lyft to create a geotag for Mark's Garage as the drop-off point for First Friday for anybody that's taking a Lyft on that day. But overall, we've been able to run the structure of the event pretty well. We've had two portable toilets, which according to our vendor is adequate, given what he's, you know, taken the back as, so we've always kept an open dialogue, and if we need to put another one on, that's not a problem. We also hired two Chinatown natives to help us clean the street at the end. They're always around, and for 20 bucks in a soda, they do a real good job. So they do, they do our cleaning and they take the trash liner out and reline it for the city, and then we put the trash into our private collection for the street. As I mentioned, our liquor license was granted for all but one month. For April through October's licenses, we are allowed to serve from 8:00 PM to 10:00 PM. And from November and December, including January of this year, we were granted from 7, or excuse me, from 8:00 PM to 11:00 PM. I'm happy to report that the increase in sales have been filled. We are ideally trying to do an hour earlier, though, so our target is to do 6:30 to 10 versus 7:30 to 11:00. So with any luck, we can lobby DTS for this change, given the amount of people that have continued to show up, and hopefully get that closure a little earlier. So far, our merchant corps has successfully ran eight events with beer and wine sales, no hard alcohol, it's been a pretty steadfast rule of ours. We're not looking to do that, it's just to help offset costs of beer and wine. We have had two bartenders, one ID checking host, four perimeter hosts at the entrances and exits, along with 12 or so street security individuals that are posted in front of these locations that all have liquor licenses. We continue to work with Young's Market Company, they've been a great partner of ours in helping us to afford this on the back end with each license. So they do great things where they'll offer us some money for our entertainment, and in cost, we would be able to offset that to putting it towards the street. So it's been a nice, it's been a nice kind of way to work with them, to help them help us make this a success. HPD, so far, our request hasn't changed from the beginning, it's one sergeant, two blue and four foot. At the end of every event, we always ask them how it go, and so far, we've received positive responses, people haven't been rowdy or aggressive. There have been two incidences that I know of, both where the gentleman got rowdy and police corrected the behavior, and the corrected behavior carried on. So there was no charges, no injuries, nothing really. We have supported eight musicians and bands over the last events, and we continue to expand that into 2019. We have produced nine murals, eight in 2018. Our current installation is actually our first one that we did, and the landowner loves the piece so much, she refuses to let us rotate it. So what we've done instead is utilized storefronts to feature the artists, and then some of them have wanted to take their pieces home, so of course, since there are... Our, you know, greatest highlight for that is being able to showcase them to a large amount of people that maybe we didn't know, and then also engage people in life art. In this digital age where you can see so much, to actually go and experience something is part of what we think is critical to this mixture. Our funding for the specific street closure and liquor license comes from four merchants, four liquor licenses on Hotel Street, and we continue to share our public concern for public safety once the streets were open during our event. So we bleed together and have shouldered the cost to try to get this event to maintain our public safety for our crowds that continue to come through our license times until 2:00 PM. We are working with Access Chinatown, which is a small group of organizers that are focused on place-based local tourism, so it's not meant to do from HTA down, it's meant to do from community up. So we're working with other area merchants like Robert Sawai, who I should say statewide on that level, to see how we can bring tourism into the area that's more of an effective and better managed way than dropping off, you know, busloads of people and tourists. So it's nice to have these different people in place to help us promote and create the marketing around our event and communicate. So with Access, they've produced a website for us, I didn't have it listed, I don't know why I didn't put that. It's, I believe, hollunchinatown.com. Basically, it's a listing of all the arts district merchants, along with what's active for First Friday. We're beginning to push that through 2019 with bumping our SEO scores so that our search ranking on, you know, engines like Google are higher, and people are starting to see our site first versus other sites. So that's been something with collaborating through Access, which also includes individuals like Ali, Shikuni, Saki from Art and Fleet, to coordinate spaces to create a current of people running through this event. So by activating Haisam, Hawaii State Art Museum, with what they're doing in their events, people are walking from there down to Hawaii Theater, down to Mark's Garage, down to our event, and now even Mountain Kada Street is getting active with a couple of really great businesses that have opened and participated in First Friday. So that kind of rolls me into our goals. We want to, of course, you know, increase our revenues, but we're also realizing that there's a capacity that we can and want to maintain. So what we're doing is looking at other events to income generate that don't require street closures. A good one is these pub crawls that kind of pop up on Facebook, I don't know if you guys are ever solicited for them, but they're outside organized, so we kind of figure we'll try our hand at internally organizing it, give people a better experience, and be able to basically reap the revenue from that particular event versus allowing an outside promoter to do it, kind of similar to what we've been doing with First Friday. We're also increasing our possibility for extending collaboration with 501(c)(3)'s. As you know, the city has a grants and aid program for 501(c)(3)'s that include economic development, but it's kind of, in my perspective, a part for a (c)(3) that's a nonprofit to understand economic development in a lot of articulated ways. So we're hoping to partner with some downtown that would be able to help us potentially tap some grant funds, especially for the arts and culture section and promoting and enhancing that. Other than that, I've worked on the figures for you of what we've invested so far, it is a loss, and we're aware of it. Our goal is that we make it break even from there. If we can make a profit on it, fantastic, but we're really not thinking that's reasonable. So in all reality, we're all taking this as an investment to hope that this event will break even for us in 2019. So that's our overreaching goal, amplification, growth, and breaking even.
Okay, thank you very much. Can we hear from enforcement, please?
For...
Identify yourself.
For August 2nd, 2018, I'm sorry, November 3rd, 2018, or 2nd to November 3rd, there was no violations observed, no citations issued for this event. Entertainment ended at 2,200 hours, alcohol service ended at 2,300 hours. At midnight, all alcoholic beverages were removed from the street. There was one noise complaint, but it was addressed at the time of the complaint.
Commissioners, do you have any questions? Okay, there's no further questions, then no action is necessary for this item.
No action.
Thank you, Ms. Reed.
Thank you very much.
I just have a hard time when I look at your numbers here.
Yeah, you and my accountant.
You know, I mean, you must have deep pockets.
No, actually, it's all of us really trying to make something work, so...
Minus 29,000?
Spread amongst four.
Yeah, I understand, but...
Thank you.
Better luck next time around.
Do you want, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, she has number seven for December, I guess we could just go ahead and just go with that.
Yeah, okay, so, yeah, let's move into, I'm sorry, please introduce yourself again.
Nicole Reed for Arts Culture Merchants, et cetera, Secretary's Attorney Room. I'd like to request that I could continue December till next, next month, when I can finish doing all the report, or, excuse me, next week, not next month. Apologies. Like I said, I'm still recovering and I'm catching up on work, so if I could do December for next week, I would very much appreciate it.
Continue to, you know, January 17.
Motion to continue, agenda item seven to January 17, 2019. Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number seven, seven will be continued to January 17, 2019. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hope to feel better.
Let's move into agenda item number eight, this is a three-month review of YKK Snappers Inc., Mr. Keuch.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Keuch, the licensing, this is a three-month review. I don't have anything to add, I don't think there have been any violations, and if you're wondering where Mr. Kashani is, he called me at 3:15 and he said he missed his flight report.
Part of this review was so that we could talk to Mr. Kashani.
I understand, and I have no problem if you want to continue it to next week, and I'll put him in handcuffs and bring him here, so...
Are you representing that you'd be able to handle your partner, Mr. Keuch?
Well, that is true. Can't handle him getting to the flight on time, though.
Must be the TSA shut down.
Not a pleasure.
Talk to you guys, what do you want to do? I mean, we cannot set conditions on special applications and allow the applicant to just totally disregard it.
All right, no, I understand that, I, you know, and you made that clear on our...
Because the next time around, the commission may have a different opinion.
All right, I understand.
I think we want to see Mr. Kashani at least once, so I, my motion is to continue agenda item eight for one week.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number eight is continued for one week.
Thank you, Mr. Keuch.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keuch. Commissioners, can I have a type of action on agenda items number nine through 15?
Yes. Motion for the acceptance of plea and adoption of decision in order for agenda items nine to 15 inclusive.
Second.
Then moved in second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye. The acceptance of plea and adoption of decision in order, agenda items number nine through 15 inclusive are approved.
Motion for the adoption of decision in order for agenda item 16 through 30 inclusive. Second.
Then moved in second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye. The adoption of decision in order, agenda items number 16 to 30 inclusive are approved. Let's move into the adjudications. Ms. Reed, please introduce yourself.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Ms. Aray. Join yearly Deputy Corporation Counsel here on behalf of the prosecutor, here for the prosecution for today's adjudication.
I join yearly Deputy Corporation Counsel here on behalf of the prosecute, here for the prosecution for today's adjudication.
Thank you. Calling Agenda Item Number 31, Safeway Stores, Number 1263.
Good afternoon, Gabriel Povenza. On behalf of the licensee, on my right is Tony Hader, he's the store director for the licensee.
Ms. Neely, uh, do you wait for reading of the charge?
Wait for reading of the charge.
Would you like to plead?
No contest.
Motion to accept the plea. Second.
Move to second, all of your favor.
Aye.
I vote, uh, Agenda Item Number 31, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Neely, uh, this is a first violation for, um, not having a, not being able to produce a current copy of the rule, rules. Um, I recommend a fine of $100. Any comment?
No real comment, other than they do have a copy, they have copies there. The manager on, on stage was not able to locate them. Um, everybody's since been informed the exact location and we don't foresee it being a problem in the future. Just apologize for it happening at all.
Thank you. Motion to approve the recommended fine of $100. Second.
Move to second, all of your favor.
Aye.
I vote, uh, Agenda Item Number 31, the recommended fine of $100 is approved. Calling Agenda Item Number 32, Club Best Friend.
Good afternoon, Francis Mayera, VP for YHK TMKE, Club Best Friend.
Okay, um, the charges honor about April 26, 2018, in the City and County of Honolulu, State of Hawaii. Licensee failed to make time record entries at the time its employee Naomi Tupas, or Noemi Tupas, uh, reported on duty and again when the employee went off duty in violation of Rule 38238.4b of the Rules of the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu.
Sir, would you like to accept, deny or plead no contest to the charges?
No contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea. Second.
Then move to second, all of your favor.
Aye.
I vote, uh, Agenda Item Number 32, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Neely.
Uh, this is a first violation, an employee had forgotten to sign in. I recommend a penalty of $250.
Any comment, Mr. Mayera?
I've, uh, spoken to my employees and, um, tried to have this not happen anymore. They don't even tell you anything when they're going to leave or when they come in, so... Just going to watch on this so it doesn't happen again.
Thank you. Motion to approve the recommended fine of $250. Second.
Move to second, all of your favor.
Aye.
I vote, uh, Agenda Item Number 32, the recommended fine of $250 is approved.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for welcoming.
Um, Agenda Item Number 33, Bar Alikes.
Elixirs.
Pronounce that again?
I think it's elixirs.
Elixirs?
That's my best guess.
Yes, um...
It sure looks, it sure looks Greek to me.
Um, licensee did sign a waiver of appearance and written stipulation to plead no contest to this charge.
Do you have a copy of that?
I do.
Um, motion to, uh, waive appearance and, uh, accept the no contest plea in written form. Second.
Move to second, all of your favor.
Aye.
I vote, uh, Agenda Item Number 33, the no contest and the waiver of non-appearance is approved.
Ms. Neely.
This is a first violation for, um, an employee not parking out. I recommend a fine of $250.
Motion to approve the recommended fine of $250. Second.
Move to second, all of your favor.
Aye.
I vote, uh, Agenda Item Number 33, the recommended fine of $250 is approved. Calling, uh, Agenda Item Number 34, Oso Yami LLC.
Uh, licensee for this charge also, uh, signed a written waiver of appearance and stipulation to plead no contest.
Motion to, uh, accept the waiver of appearance and the no contest plea. Second.
Move to second, all of your favor.
Aye.
I vote, uh, Agenda Item Number 34, the waiver of non-appearance and the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Neely.
This is a first violation of, um, the licensee using unauthorized electric system for payroll. So I recommend a fine of $250.
Motion to approve the recommended fine of $250. Second.
Move to the second, all of your favor.
Aye.
I vote, uh, Agenda Item Number 34, the recommended fine of $250 is approved. Calling Agenda Item Number 35, Bevy LLC.
Hi there, Commissioner. My name is Christian Zalp, I'm the owner of Bevy LLC.
Okay. Uh, the first charge is, charge number one. Honor about May, May 3rd, 2018, in the City and County of Honolulu, State of Hawaii. Licensee utilized an electronic or otherwise recorded payroll registration for the purpose of keeping employee time cards or other adequate records in accordance with Rule 38238.4 without first obtaining the administrator's approval in violation of Rule 38238.4c of the Rules of the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu.
And, charge two?
Honor about May 3rd, 2018, in the City and County of Honolulu, State of Hawaii. Licensee employed Samantha, Samantha trustee in that section of the license premises where liquor is sold, served or consumed without said employee being properly, properly registered with the Liquor Commission in violation of Rule 38238.5a of the Rules of the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu.
And charge four, please, having charge three, please.
Honor about May 3rd, 2018, in the City and County of Honolulu, State of Hawaii. Licensee employed Rachel Lee in that section of the license premises where liquor is sold, served or consumed without said employee being properly registered with the Liquor Commission in violation of Rule 38238.5a of the Rules of the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu.
And charge four, please.
Honor about May 3rd, 2018, in the City and County of Honolulu, State of Hawaii. Licensee failed to ensure that its employee Jordan K. Edwards, who's required to register with the commission, have his certificate of registration for the licensed premises readily available for inspection while on duty in violation of Rule 38238.5b of the Rules of the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu.
Thank you. Sir, we'll take these one by one. How would you like to plead as to charge one?
Uh, no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea for charge one. Second.
Move to second, all of your favor.
Aye.
I vote, uh, Agenda Item Number 35, charge number one, no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Neely, what is your recommendation for charge one?
Uh, $250.
Thank you. And sir, how would you like to plead as to charge two?
Uh, no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea for charge two. Second.
Move to second, all of your favor.
Aye.
I vote, uh, Agenda Item Number 35, charge number two, the no contest plea is approved.
Ms. Neely, your recommendation for charge two?
Uh, $350.
Thank you. Sir, you plead as to charge three?
No contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea for charge three? Second.
Move to second, all of your favor.
Aye.
I vote, uh, Agenda Item Number 35, charge number two, no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Neely, for charge three, your recommendation?
$350.
And sir, as to charge four?
No contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea for charge four? Second.
Move to second, all of your favor.
Aye.
I vote, uh, Agenda Item Number 35, um, charge number four, the no contest plea is accepted. Uh, point, point of order, please. Uh, I believe I misspoke on, um, the previous, uh, uh, charge. I believe I classified charge three as charge two.
Corrected for the...
Can we correct that, please? For the record. Thank you.
Ms. Neely, as to charge four, your recommendation?
$350.
Thank you. Sir? Can you comment?
Uh, yes, actually, um, apologies, first off. I was unaware that, um, our POS system that we use, which is a national recognized POS system, one of the largest iPad-based POS systems across the country. I was just unaware that we were required to register. I thought that was something that I had discussed with my investigator when we first applied for our liquor license. We've been using it for five years. Um, as far as the, uh, other charges for two and three, I was just unaware that I normally give this to my employees, that they need to keep up with their liquor commission, uh, cards. Both cards have just been expired. They both held current cards for other places, just the cards for our establishment that expired at that time. Taking that into my own hands, and now I keep my better records so I can remind our employees that they need to read up their card. And lastly, the charge four is just my manager on duty left his wallet at home and in a rush and there we are. But apologies, uh, we are taking steps and we now do daily lineups to make sure that employees do have the cards on them at all times. If they do not, they are sent home until they can pay it and come back to work.
Good system.
Thank you. Expensive, though.
Yep, it is.
And what are you, um, um, how are you addressing the charge one about the...
Oh, we, uh, we registered the, the POS system the very next day.
Okay, so it's registered?
It is registered, yes, correct.
Okay, great. Let's see, we'll give you a break on the, on the payroll registration system. Um, motion to approve, um, a fine in total of $1,000. Second.
Move to second, all of your favor.
Aye.
I, I vote, uh, Agenda Item Number 35, charges number one, two, three and four. The total fine imposed will be $1,000.
Thank you, Commissioners, thank you for giving me that.
Thank you very much. Calling Agenda Item, uh, Number 36, Tools Irish Pub, Mr. Commerford.
Good afternoon, William Commerford, proprietor of Tools. This is Joseph Art, our manager.
Thank you.
Honor about May 5th, 2018, in the City and County of Honolulu, State of Hawaii. Licensee committed liquor of any kind while in bottled glass or other container to be open and readily consumable within the licensed premises before or after the hours established by the Liquor Commission to wit 2:40 a.m. in, in violation of Rule 38238.20b of the Rules of the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu.
Sir, how would you like to plead?
Is it possible to hear the, uh, to read the investigator's report? Because we didn't have an opportunity to that, so we could plead on based on that?
Um, you'd like, you can have a continuance so that they can have the opportunity to be provided with that?
If not, never mind. If it's not readily available, we'll just plead no contest.
Is it readily available? If, if they haven't been presented with it, I would like them...
Well, they have to make a written, they, they have to make a request to the commission.
Okay, so we can continue it or we can proceed today up to you?
I don't think it's going to change.
Well, I have my...
It could just be dropped to the end of the agenda and give them the opportunity to take a look at it.
Why don't we do that? You guys take two minutes to review it and then we'll come back to you at the end of the agenda, okay?
We'll continue to the end of the agenda.
Thank you.
Agenda Item Number 36. Calling Agenda Item Number...
Well, I need to take off the...
Hold on a second, let me just pull the file. I'll need that back though.
Okay, proceed?
Yep, 37.
Um, calling Agenda Item Number 37, Jasmin's Art and Cafe.
Commissioners, my drop, manager of Jasmin's on the rule.
Can you state your last name, please, for the...
Car, proceeding onward.
Thank you.
Uh, charge one. Honor about April 27, 2018, in the City and County of Honolulu, State of Hawaii. Licensee permitted liquor of any kind while in bottled glass or other container to be open and readily consumable within the licensed premises before or after the hours established by the Liquor Commission to wit, uh, 2:15 in a, in violation of Rule 38238.20b of the Rules of the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu.
And charge two?
Honor about April 27, 2018, in the City and County of Honolulu, State of Hawaii. Licensee failed to make time record entries at the time its employee Masayuki Yamada reported on duty and again when the employee went off duty in violation of Rule 38238.4p of the Rules of the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu.
Sir, how would you like to plead?
No contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea for charge one? Second.
Move to second, all of your favor.
Aye.
I vote, uh, Agenda Item Number 37, charge number one, no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Neely, your recommendation for charge one?
Um, based on the violation occurring at 2:15 a.m., 15 minutes after closing, I recommend a fine of $650.
And sir, how would you like to plead as to charge two? Motion to accept the no contest plea for charge two? Second.
Move to second, all of your favor.
Aye.
I vote, uh, Agenda Item Number 37, charge number two, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Neely, your recommendation?
Uh, this is a first violation, um, recommend a penalty of $250.
Mr. Commer, charge one, um, you have any comment?
Yeah, um, first of all, I apologize that that happened. Um, I wasn't actually on duty at that time. Yeah, the other manager, Masayuki Yamada, was a manager at the time and, uh, after we received a citation, we actually fired the employee for, you know, um, um, drinking after hours and then also because of not, uh, not checking in properly when he was trained, um, on that process. So he's no longer with us and, uh, um, I'll see this happening again in the future.
Uh, hearing that, um, my recommendation is to approve the recommended fine of $650. However, we'll suspend $350 of that for a period of one year, provided no similar violation occurs. Second.
Then move to second, all of your favor.
Aye.
I vote, uh, Agenda Item Number 37, charge number one, recommended fine of $650 is approved. However, $350 will be suspended for a period of one year. If a similar violation happens within one year, that suspended amount will be collectible.
And for charge two, you have any comment? Is this the same employee?
Yes, it was the same employee.
And they failed to, this is a, the time entries?
Yes.
You have any problems with any other employees doing this?
No.
Okay. Uh, my motion is to approve the recommended fine of $250. Second.
Then move to second, all of your favor.
Aye.
I vote, uh, Agenda Item Number 37, charge number two, the recommended fine of $150?
$250.
$250, thank you. Is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Commer, good luck.
Thank you.
Mr. Commerford, are you...
Okay.
Come back and call Agenda Item Number 36.
Once again, Mr. William Commerford, proprietor of Tools. And, uh, thank you for your allowance to read this, because I was not aware of the full charges of what it was, so I appreciate that. Who's talking with us?
What plea, Ms. Reed? What plea would you like to enter, sir?
I would like to plead, uh, no contest.
Motion to accept the plea?
Thank you.
Second.
Move to second, all of your favor.
Aye.
I vote, uh, Agenda Item Number 36, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Neely, your recommendation?
Uh, because this violation occurred at 2:40 a.m., 40 minutes after closing time, I recommend a penalty of $900.
Mr. Commerford?
Well, I'd like to hope for a lesser fine, but I'll tell you that the gentleman who was the manager on duty, his name was Terry Waters, he's no longer with us. He was fired for a good cause because he was embezzling from us as well. So obviously, he wasn't paying attention to our rules and I don't think he was paying attention to your rules either.
Appreciate that. And how long has our tools been open?
Under our operation since, uh, 2003. As are Tools, I think, back in the 1970s.
But you've been running it for a while, huh?
Since 2003.
That's right. Um, all right. Uh, my motion will be to approve the recommended fine of $900. However, we will suspend collection of $500 of that for a period of one year, provided no similar violations occur in that one-year period. Second.
Move to second, all of your favor.
Aye.
I vote, uh, Agenda Item Number 36, recommended fine of $900 is approved. However, $500 will be suspended for a period of one year.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Moving on, to Agenda Item Number 38, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Twilight Bar and Grill.
Good afternoon, dear Commissioners. My name is Danny Do, I'm the Chair of YKU, represent for JJKK. And on my right is a resident of JJKK.
Charge one. Honor about April 28, 2018, on, at 2:20 a.m. In the City and County of Honolulu, State of Hawaii. Licensee failed to have the street and or primary entrance... and or primary entrances to the licensed premises unlocked during the time customers were on the premises in violation of Rule 38472.2 of the Rules of the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu.
Charge two, please.
Okay, charge two, on or about April twenty-eight, twenty eighteen, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee failed to have a time card or other adequate record showing in English the month, day, year, and time indicating A M L P M and the legal first name and surname of its employee Sung Hyun Oh when that employee was on duty in violation of Rule 38238.4a of the Rules of the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu.
Charge three, please.
On or about April twenty-eight, twenty eighteen, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee allowed the obstruction, hampering, or interfering with investigations or liquor commission operations in any way including but not limited to the sounding of alarms, flashing of lights, or use of the public address system or other advance warning announcing the arrival of commission investigators in violation of Rule 38479.1 of the Rules of the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu.
Sir, as to charge one, how would you like to plead?
Uh, please, no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea for charge one, second.
Move this second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number thirty-eight, no contest plea is accepted for charge number one.
Ms. Neely, your recommendation?
Uh, this is a first violation for adjudication purposes. Uh, I recommend a fine of five hundred dollars.
Sir, how would you like to plead to charge two?
Please, no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea for charge two, second.
Move this second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number thirty-eight, charge number two, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Neely?
Uh, this is a first violation for adjudication purposes. I recommend a fine of two hundred fifty dollars.
And sir, how would you like to plead to charge three?
Uh, please, no contest, but I have to explain on that.
Okay, one minute. Uh, motion to accept the no contest plea for charge three, second.
Then move this second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number thirty-eight, charge number three, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Neely? Uh, this is a first violation. I recommend a penalty of one thousand dollars.
So let's go one by one. Charge one, um, doors are locked at two twenty AM, customer still inside?
Uh, actually, he's one of the driver for her, so I was waiting for her to take her home, drive her home because she not driving on that day. And then we tried to security, we locked the door because the bartender was counting all the money, so we was worried the area that happened robbery a lot, so at that time being we counting money and then we walk to the front door to open the door for the officer, it take about couple minutes, so that's why we...
Okay, well, if there's a case, if it's not an employee, then it's a customer, so next time driver has to wait outside.
But, you know, there was a like, oh, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I'm gonna explain because, you know...
Sure, go ahead.
The Capulani side, and then it's a...
I'm sorry, can you speak up?
Oh, Capulani side, the, you know, we have a two-door, it's a back door of the, you know, Portina side, and the front door is like a Capulani, you know, the main, uh, main street. And then the Capulani main street is a very, you know, dangerous and there's a lot of, you know, homeless people and then, so we are a couple of times they tried to lock my place and they break the window. So, uh, the, uh, the, you know, that, you know, happened before, like, you know, right one week ago and then, you know, they tried to break it and then we, you know, called the police, you know, that happened.
I understand that you folks are, um, I, I hear that you're doing this for security reasons, but it's against the rules.
Yes.
So if everybody else has to follow the rules, so do you folks, and we have a lot of businesses that are located in some pretty unsafe areas, so if they have to follow the rules, so do you folks.
Oh, yeah, I always follow the regulation, but...
Okay, so no locking the door then unless you folks are all out and gone, no customers inside, okay? Um, motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars, second.
Move this second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number thirty-eight, the recommended fine of five hundred dollars is approved.
And, uh, for charge two, you folks, this is for the, your employee not being, you're not having adequate time records for your employees.
We plead no contest.
Okay, so no comment, all right. Uh, motion to approve the recommended fine of two hundred fifty dollars for charge two, second.
Move this second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number thirty-eight, charge number two, the recommended fine of two hundred fifty dollars is approved.
And for charge three, this is a serious violation, so please explain what happened.
Oh, it's, um, it's the same time, like, from the time we walk it through the door and then we have one barback and one, uh, waiter was surrounding them, tried to explain them, that, that's the customer, it's not the customer, it's actually driver, so that's...
That's not the time to explain. That is not the time to explain. When investigators arrive at your premises, they need to be able to walk freely through your premises.
Oh, yes.
They cannot have anybody, no, 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 that's obstructing them.
Yes, we never do that.
And we take that very seriously because we cannot have our investigators out there trying to defend themselves against people while they're trying to do their work.
Yeah, of course.
Okay, so this is not a, this is not a minor violation, this is a serious violation. If you need to talk to your employees and retrain them, that's fine. The investigators are trained to notify everyone that they are there and your employees need to let them go wherever they want and be quiet. Thank you. Uh, motion to approve the recommended fine of one thousand dollars, second.
Move this second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number thirty-eight, charge number three, the recommended fine of a thousand dollars is approved. Let me just state for the record, you may want to seriously consider hiring security to eliminate all of these things, the security are well-trained. You're in a very, uh, uh, very risky area, very familiar with that area. There are a lot of homeless, there's a lot of people running around, so perhaps you should look into investing in a security system or guard or whatever. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's move on, the agenda to agenda item number thirty-nine, Cachet's Lounge.
Um, okay, uh, Mr. Kiyuchi requested, uh, this be continued to the next available.
For the record, there's no, there's no call, right? No response to the call? Probably went to the movies.
He's here? No?
Nope.
Okay. Um, he did request that this be continued to next available because he recently received the report, so, uh, I have no objection.
Thank you. Motion to continue, agenda item thirty-nine, Cachet's Lounge, to the next available date, second.
Then move this second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I, I vote aye, agenda item number thirty-nine is continued to the next available. Agenda item number forty, Proof Public House.
Good afternoon, I'm Serena Hashimoto, um, H A S H I M O T O. I'm the owner of Proof Public House. Thank you. On or about May fourth, twenty eighteen, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee permitted liquor to be consumed on the premises of the licensee on or on any premises connected therewith to wit on the street, fronting the establishment, whether they're purchased or not, and consumption, consumption in such area is not permitted by the terms of the license in violation of section two eighty-one seventy-eight b two of the Hawaii Revise Statutes.
Ma'am, how would you like to plead?
No contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea, second.
Then move this second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number forty, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Neely? I recommend a fine of one thousand dollars. This is the first violation.
I would like to request that that be reduced. I, the first violation I've ever had and, um, it was Cinco de Mayo and I had hired a security man to come and he did not perform his job well and let somebody walk from my establishment with the beer out of it and they've been replaced, but I, I would like to ask for some decency in regard to the fine.
Okay. And this is, uh, near, uh, Fort Street Mall, correct?
Yes, it's in Chaplin Lane between Bethel and Fort Street Mall.
This is a former Mercury Bar?
Yes, that's correct.
And I believe that we approved an extension for you folks onto the sidewalk area?
That's correct.
Did it occur in that area or else?
That's precisely, so we have precisely that issue, so we usually always have one security and because it was Cinco de Mayo, we called a second security guy and they sent somebody who was not trained and simply just, I believe, uh, the Liquor Commission has recording of them just kind of letting the guy walk, walk out, so it's kind of unbelievable that it happened and I'm embarrassed, you know, when I take responsibility, but I don't plan on anything like that ever happening again.
Okay. Um, you know, when we approved that extension, we totally cautioned you that that was dangerous because we will have to monitor, monitor to ensure that people are not taking drinks out into that alleyway.
Yes.
So this is why we cautioned you.
Yes.
Okay. Um, but seeing as it is a first-time violation, um, I'm gonna, my motion is to approve the recommended fine of one thousand dollars. However, we'll suspend collection of five hundred dollars for a period of one year provided no similar violation occurs in that one-year period. If a similar violation occurs in the one-year period, that five hundred dollars is collectible in addition to any other fines levied by the commission, second.
Then move this second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number forty, recommended fine of one thousand dollars is approved, however, five hundred dollars will be suspended for a period of one year with the verbiage in Vice Chairman's motion.